Okay, I'd like to call this, whoa, better turn me down. I'd like to call this meeting of the Manchester Community Schools, a special meeting to order. If you'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, which is six things, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I think we can dispense with the roll call. Everybody's here, Mr. Francis here. Emergency additions or deletions to the agenda? Entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
All motion.
Mr. Hensley?
Second.
Mr. Esposito, all in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous? Okay. Before we get into hearing a patron, we got a little statement here. Tonight's meeting is to, for the board to consider the administration's proposed modification to the CARES 3.0 reentry plan. This is a special board meeting that was duly advertised to consider this amendment. Our policy allows for patrons' comments. This will be done for a total of sixty minutes. Each patron signed in before the meeting will have two minutes to address the board. Minute sharing will not be allowed. Patrons representing a group are strongly encouraged to select a spokesperson. This will allow more patron comments. This is not a public hearing or a debate. This is a board meeting that is held in public. The board will not be engaging in a question and answer session during the meeting. Proper meeting order, proper meeting order is expected by all. Your cooperation is appreciated. And before we ask the first four folks to step up to the microphone, I would like to take a moment to recognize our central office staff and Mr. Self for all the extra efforts in preparation for this meeting. Mr. Baldwin.
All right, without further ado, our first four speakers are Eric Reichenbach, Mandy Fierstos, Patricia Noonan, and Ross Bragg. So if you could go ahead and come up here. And then anybody that wishes to cede their time, if there are, if there is time at the end in the sixty-minute allotment, are we going to, Mr. Turgler and the board say, we will try to get back to you if time remains. So those four can come up first, please. Thank you.
Yep, I will. Sorry, I was. Can you hear me? Sorry. So my name's Mandy Fierstos. I'm just going to read the email that I sent to the board this afternoon because I'm not really any other way clear to say this. But I am a pediatric ICU at Children's Hospital at Lutheran in Fort Wayne. As you are all aware, Lutheran and Pediatric Regional are the two largest hospitals in our region. We are fortunate to have, between these two hospitals, we have sixteen pediatric ICU beds. That's not very many, right? We can all agree on that. Out of those beds, we also have eight in South Bend. So north of Indianapolis, we only have twenty-four ICU beds for pediatric patients. As of Friday, all twenty-four of those were full. There were no more beds for a critical patient. Last week, the National Children's Hospital sent out a plea to all leaders in the public, the private sector, and the American public to send out or to help stand and protect our children. They plead the following. One, all eligible population should be vaccinated. Two, everyone should mask responsibly, particularly during school and while attending large gatherings. Three, all should adhere to proven safe practice of social distancing and hand washing. In July, the Academy, the American Academy of Pediatric recommended masks to be mandated in schools when we reopen. We, as a community, chose not to do that. We did not follow the recommendations. These people have and will continue to spend their entire career studying and recommending what is best for all pediatric populations. We were able to keep schools open last year. I can speak from personal experience that our population, our pediatric units and our hospitals last year at this time were nearly empty. At times, we had zero patients. Without a doubt, this is due to scientific-based evidence that masks, this is due to masks. I plead to our board to please follow the AAP recommendations. I spend my workdays caring for critical ill patients. These patients include shaken babies, trauma patients, car accidents, sporting.
Time's up.
Hi, my name's Patrick Noonan. I'm new to your community. I also happen to have trained my entire life to take care of pediatric patients, both sick and healthy. I spent four years in undergrad, four years in med school, and additional six years in training. I am currently the chief of pediatrics at Lutheran Children's Hospital in Fort Wayne. I'm here to tell you that we are currently in the middle of a healthcare crisis. The last time I was in charge of the ICU last week, I was turning away kids because we were full. This isn't something that's made up. This isn't something that's in a movie. This is real. We are currently in a spike right now. We know how to take care of that. That's to mask everyone and to vaccinate those that can. And that's the best way we can keep our kids in school, which is where they belong and which is where they need to be. If we don't do that responsibly and make everybody wear masks, we're going to keep doing what we had to do last week, which is cancel school, e-learning, all those things. And that's not what's best for our kids. We know what's best for them. We know we need to keep them safe and healthy. And that's the best way to do that is to put masks on everyone. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Eric Reichenbach. I practice family medicine in this community. I've done that for twenty years. I've got a wife who teaches, and I've got kids that go to this community as well. Thanks to the school board for having this opportunity to work on collaborating, to find a way to address this in a rational way. And it's really nice to see so many people from the community here who are interested in solving problems that face our kids. The reason I'm here tonight is to ask for increased measures to protect children in our community. You know, we all have access to news regarding this highly transmissible Delta variant. This is different than what we experienced a year and a half ago. It's driving infections across the country, and we see that in statistics. You know, as a medical provider, I have access to data that people in the community don't necessarily have that. Mandy and Dr. Noonan spoke to that. I took care of my first pediatric patient with COVID in Wabash. And that kind of thing was unheard of this first time around. This is, this is different. The reality is that our walk-in clinics in the Parkview system and the Parkview emergency departments and the hospital facilities are being overwhelmed right now. I think we all heard the phrase early on, flatten the curve. We have seen, already seen the predictable outcome of these lax mitigation measures. I mean, there's other school systems that we know of who are shutting down. My concern centers on three issues. The health of our kids, the health of our community, and the rest of our school year. With our kids, there is just no way for these people to defend themselves ages five to eleven. There's no vaccine for these kids. And I have plenty of parents who would like to get their kids vaccinated, who are unable to do that yet. These kids, many kids don't get sick. So Mandy and Dr. Noonan see the worst. But many kids just get mildly ill, but they pass it on to susceptible people in our community. So I'm worried about the elders that take care of these kids. And I'm worried about the status of our school year. Our school year, our school year, we know that kids belong in school. And if we don't do something different, our kids are going to spend their time e-learning. Nobody wants that. They're not going to be participating in events. So we have very few mitigation managers that we can employ. Masking is one of those that's relatively.
Your time's up, sir. Thank you.
So I was going to drop a bunch of data for everyone. I'm Ross Bragg. I knew we, last year we moved here. I was going to drop a bunch of CDC data and those recommendations, but.
You have three medical professionals that are doing that for us. What I will tell you is that COVID rates have increased seventy-two percent in the last fourteen days in Indiana. Hospitalizations have increased fifty-one percent in the last fourteen days. And death rate has increased ninety-six percent in the last fourteen days. I have three children. Only one of them goes to Manchester schools. The other two go to schools in just north of Indianapolis. And my son's just lost their fifty-six-year-old grandmother, who was a non-smoker and entirely healthy, to COVID. She was thirty-seven days. She was in ICU on a ventilator and ECMO. My sixteen-year-old, as they were preparing to go back to Indianapolis to see her for the very last time, had a stress seizure, where I called the paramedics to my house because I freaked out. He was a healthy, never had issues before. And this happened. This is something we can do. Everyone, all of our kids should be in masks. We did it last year and had zero problems at all. There's no reason for it to continue to be like this now. Thank you.
Mary Earl, April White, Matt Berlingame, Chris Medsger.
It's good to see you. I haven't been here for a while. Okay. I'm going to make this very short. I'm not going to do a pro or con on vaccinations or masks. But I am going to ask you, if you start applying stuff, I want it applied equally. I don't want to see you mask kids in a classroom and make them social distance and then tell me it's okay for sports and after-school activities. I see nothing in any of these regulations that apply to after-school or sports. And you can't tell these kids you have to wear a mask. Oh, but you can wrestle, you can play tennis, you can do everything else because it's called sports.
Thank you.
I'm April White. I'm equally going to keep this as brief as I possibly can. I agree that the experts spoke, and you can look up the research. I am not an expert, so I'm not going to tell you what the science says. Scientists can do that. You can listen to them. One question that I do have rhetorical is when I look at the case data on the website, it offers to me information about how many students have been identified as positive and how many students are placed in isolation or quarantined. On Thursday, when there was a mass exodus from the school, there was not one single student identified as positive at the elementary school. But that's what started all of this. And so what that tells me is it's a staff person who's positive. And I think we, as parents and as a community, have a right to know how many staff people are positive also. And I am pleading that that information be placed on the website as well. I don't need to know names. But if, if my kids are being exposed and being placed in quarantine because of a staff person, we have a right to know that too.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Matt Berlingame. Today, as of August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, via the CDC, three hundred and sixty-one children ages zero to seventeen years have died of COVID-19 out of over thirty-nine million cases. That's a mortality rate of zero point zero 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 nine percent. That's ninety thousandths of a percent of the kids have died for this. This is not an epidemic, certainly not among kids. And let's remember that as we move forward. Our kids are much more likely to die from multitude of other reasons, including simply driving to school in the morning. Hundreds of studies over several decades have shown that masks do not stop viral transmission or infection. They do not stop, they do stop, however, bacterial pathogens like pneumonia and meningitis-causing bacteria that actually collect on and in masks. The National Institute of Health studied pandemics and epidemics and concluded, quote, "The vast majority of influenza deaths resulted from secondary bacterial pneumonia," end quote. Additionally, masks have been shown to significantly lower oxygen levels, and those levels decrease the longer the mask is worn. This in turn reduces cognitive function. It also certainly stresses the body and makes the body more susceptible to infection. So let's think about this for a minute. Mandating that our kids and teachers wear masks will significantly lower blood oxygen levels and cognitive brain function, which in itself, in an educational situation, is ridiculous and unethical and immoral. And of course, it also stresses the body and makes the body more susceptible to infection. The mask will not prevent transmission of infection or transmission of COVID-19 virus, but the mask will harbor extremely dangerous pathogens known to cause secondary bacterial infections, which the research shows is the cause of the vast majority of influenza deaths. It seems logical, then, that wearing a mask actually promotes the probability of a secondary bacterial, a secondary bacterial infection if a person does get the virus. And this secondary infection is much more deadly than the virus itself.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Could we refrain from applause and jeers, please? Let's keep this neutral as we can, please. Go ahead, Chris.
My name's Chris Medsger. And first and foremost, I'm just going to say true freedom is only, it's only found through Jesus Christ. So with that aside, I just want to remind you that we are sovereigns of the republic of the United States of America. Our constitution guarantees us these rights that we perceive through our Creator. Nobody, elected, unelected, has the right to stomp on those constitutional rights, period. I know you're going to get pushed back from your liability insurance people, possibly teacher union members, possibly Indiana State School Board people, counselors. You're going to get pushed back from everybody. But our kids will not have a future in this country if we continue to pluck away at individual freedom. So I'm just asking that you remember who you are, what country you live. If you don't love God, I pray you love this country enough to not mandate a medical procedure, basically, upon individual people who are more than capable. I know children shouldn't be in it, but the adults that work in this system should have opportunity to choose what kind of medical care that they put on themselves or for themselves. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ian Angle, Ethan Esposito, Debbie Chinworth, Nick Kopke.
I'll take it back down. You're good. I'm tall. My name's Ian Angle. My wife and I have three kids at MES and have loved being a part of this, the community and the school system. Last year was really hard on everyone, everyone in this room and us as a family. And we debated sending our kids back because of this previous year's mask mandate. We're glad to hear this year that it would be enforced again. The simple truth is that kids get sick. You keep them home, you let them rest and recover. They get better, and then you send them back to school. The statistics don't show differently when it comes to COVID-19 or the Delta strain. No science has shown that there is grave danger with kids in keeping a student population in school and unmasked. And the adults in our community that have had the choice to face COVID with their natural immunity or get vaccinated. But don't take my word for it. Kristin Moffett, Assistant Professor of Pediatrics at Harvard Medical School and Associate Physician in Pediatrics in the Division of Infectious Diseases at Boston's Children's, or Boston Children's, says, "What seems to be consistent so far in multiple settings in multiple countries, including the U.S., is that the majority of COVID-19 infections in individuals under the age of nineteen tend to be mild." She explained, "Infection in pediatric patients of all ages tends to be associated with significantly lower rates of hospitalization and significantly lower rates of critical and severe illness." I expected to hear the phrases today, "The science is settled, there could be no debate, we must protect our children," and I agree with that. But twenty percent of the school quarantining because of arbitrary medical policies, not school-wide masking, is not fair to the kids. I really feel bad for teachers too, because they don't want to be the enforcers of the mask mandates. That's not what they got their degree for. They want to help our kids learn.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ethan Esposito. I'm currently a senior here at Manchester High School. And I came here today expecting mostly adults to be the ones speaking, so I thought I'd bring my student perspective. The academic and social benefits of attending school in person far outweigh the cons of wearing masks, in my opinion. Last year's plan seemed to work pretty well to keep us in school, so I encourage to not stray away from that. We have the chance to stop an inevitable shutdown now, so I ask to please, that we please seize that opportunity. As well as, my eleven-year-old sister is ineligible to get the vaccine, so I just please ask you make the best choice to protect her in school.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Debbie Chinworth. I'm a registered nurse in my fortieth year of nursing. I work at one of our family care clinics here in North Manchester. In my years there, you have entrusted us with the care of your families. You trust me to give your babies their immunizations. You share your concerns, and I listen at your visits. You ask me to have the provider refill your anxiety medications. You trust me with your teenagers who are in crisis. You stop me at the grocery store or at a soccer game to ask questions about your symptoms, your blood pressure, your rashes. We, as your nurses, walk with you when a parent is diagnosed with dementia. We hold you when we have to inform you of a new cancer diagnosis and work diligently to get the care you need. You trust me because I'm living here with you, because I care about this community, because my kids were also students here. You trust me because I'm a professional. So now, I can't understand how the best practices for this COVID pandemic are not to be trusted. Why, in this case, are the medical professionals you trust with everything else in your life not trustworthy? In my forty years across a wide spectrum of nursing scenarios, I've never been faced with a community that doesn't trust the science, that doesn't trust the best practices, that doesn't trust their family physicians and nurses. I'm fatigued because of COVID care. I'm tired of wearing a mask. I'm tired of N95s. But mostly, I'm fatigued because the care we are providing is doubted and refused. Thank you.
Thank you.
Russell Rehard, Lori Zimmerman, Tracy Cummins, Andrew Cook.
I'm Lori Zimmerman. I'm a practicing physician in this community for twenty-two years. And I'm proud to take care of many of your children, many of your parents, and family members. And I relish that role of being a person that you come to in your hardest times and in your best times as well. I want to reiterate a couple of things. One is the Delta variant is different. It is more contagious and more infectious, and that is something that you need to take very seriously. This pandemic did not affect children back when we were in last school year. This is different, and we need to take that seriously. Number two, we are all overworked. We are tired, the hospitals are full, and we need to take this seriously because I don't have any more places to put people. I'm working through my lunch, staying late. And we need to take this extremely seriously. Masking works. We know it works because it kept our school systems open last year. The whole idea of decreased oxygen levels, I know people who run marathons in masks and not had any problems. Physicians do surgeries for eight to twelve hours in masks. I don't think anybody wants to have a surgeon who has lack of oxygen to their brain during a surgery, and it's just not true. Masking does work, but it only works if both people wear a mask. If you'd wear a mask and I don't, it's not going to work. It has to be all in masks. And I just beg you, please go back to what worked last year because children want to be in the classroom. It's the best place for learning to happen, and we know how to make that happen tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jen Birch. Jen Birch, Shadrath, Katie Cumberland.
Clean up on L1.
Do you want me to start? Okay. My name is, good evening, my name is Tracy Cummins. I'm a parent of a junior and senior at Manchester High School. Thank you for allowing the public to speak tonight. I appreciate the information that Dr. Zimmerman and all the other people that are in the medical field shared. But as we know, what works for one doesn't always work for another when it comes to treating and preventing illnesses. Therefore, I'm asking the school board to allow the parents of each student to decide if they would like the child to wear a mask or not. It should be a choice, especially since the CDC has not mandated and has left it up to the school board. I appreciate what the school board does, but a school board shouldn't be given the right to decide if my child should wear a mask or not. I am willing to sign a waiver, just like we do when our children participate in sports, so that it does not come back on the school. I know that was mentioned, not that part, but it was mentioned that the school does not want the liability. The teachers and staff and children's parents should have a choice. We are being told that science is right tonight, but in two thousand twenty, we had someone from the Bowen Center tell us that science has had it wrong for all these years about only having two genitors. I'm sure you get the point. Some science and doctors also say it is okay to murder unborn babies through abortion. My point is, do we even know the long-term effect of wearing masks? I learned in grade school, we are not to breathe in carbon dioxide. And are people truly wearing masks, or is it just hypocrisy game? I've seen many pictures with people wearing a mask, then they take it off and take a picture. I've seen people wait to see who was wearing a mask and if that person had a mask on, then they put it on. During sports, for ten minutes, wear a mask, then we all take it off. I'm guilty of that too. I'm asking you tonight to please make a wise decision. It's not by accident that you're on the board for such a time as this. Please give choice. For people to say that those who choose not to get vaccinated or wear a mask don't care about others, we do. We just want a choice.
I normally talk to sixth graders and not adults, so I get super nervous in these circumstances. But I am not a medical professional, but I do spend some quality time inside the classroom. And I am worried about our students, the well-being of our youth, and the number of times we quarantine healthy students who never end up showing symptoms. I'm also concerned about the masks that we are putting on our faces. I have experienced masks with mold on them, masks picked up off the floor and put back on their faces, and masks so filthy, I would never want to touch them. For some students, home is not a safe place. And for those ten days that we are quarantining these students, they not only miss educationally, but they also miss socially and for their well-being. Students lose the valuable education and experiences and may never get caught back up. It's extremely difficult in the classroom to get these students back with their homework. The experiences you get in the classroom cannot be made up. Healthy athletes are sitting out of games and losing out on experiences that shape and mold their high school experiences. For so many, athletics keep them out of trouble in attending school. When we quarantine students and take the athletics away from them, what kind of choices are they going to go home and make? Moving forward, how do we adjust the policies to keep the kids in the classroom and on the athletic fields? You represent the community, but we need to do what's best for our students. I don't envy your decision, and I appreciate all you're doing for our community. As an educator, it's my job to teach the students to think for themselves. I hope that you would allow us as adults and teachers to think for ourselves as well and make our own informed decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last year, my wife and I decided to homeschool our daughter. We made that decision because of the mask mandate. We didn't want her to have to wear a mask all day in school. And with the unknown what was going to happen when you had an outbreak, if school's going to be inconsistent, if there's going to be a lot of e-learning like they're doing right now. And so this year, we put her in school. We believe in public school. My wife was an eleven-year elementary school teacher in the public school system, so we believe in public school. But if, if school continues to be shut down, if contact tracing continues to go on, school's going to be shut down, whether you have masks on kids or not. Contact tracing is not going to be a very good solution for the school. And it's going to be more e-learning. We don't believe that masks work. And so for myself and my family, we'll unfortunately have to pull our. we'll unfortunately have to pull our child out of school. She'll be denied this year, again, public education, which, like I say, we believe in. But I just not only implore you to not go on with this new opening modification, but even go farther and stop contact tracing because it's only going to interrupt public school, and it's just not a good solution. We're going to have to eventually live with COVID. It's not going to go away. We're going to have to learn how to live with it.
Thank you.
Hi. He literally said basically everything I was thinking back there. I sent my daughter to school this year because I was told there wasn't going to be any masks. And I could care less that there are people here with masks and people that aren't masks. That is their choice. It's their right. It's their freedom to do that. So that's what we're asking. Just make it my right, my freedom, to not mask. What is going to happen? We're living with this. This is here. It's here to stay. I don't care what anybody says. It is here to stay. There's going to be another variant, another variant, another variant. And then what? So we're just going to mask every single year? We're just going to mask? You're going to lose students. You will lose students. Because I can tell you right now, if we continue to mask, I know lots of parents who will be looking at these other schools that are not masking. Just something to think about. One more thing. I have looked and I have looked and I have looked today. I have not seen any data that shows that masks are effective, and I have not seen any data where they are safe. I want to see the data. Not some fake thing, not something that you see. I want to see the data. And I can't find it. Another thing, we have doctors here, which is great, and I'm thankful for them. But there's not anybody here that is in the profession of, and let's see, what are they called? An industrial hygienist. Who knows? That's their actual profession, is to know when to mask, when not to mask, who needs it and who doesn't. We don't have anybody here representing that side. Hoping you guys make the right choice. Thanks.
Thank you.
Casey Everly, Brooke Vanderpool. Well, I thought you might want to, so you don't have to. I just wanted to make sure you had the chance.
Hi, my name is Casey Everly. I sent you guys all an email earlier. I won't have time to read through all of it, so I'm just going to try and hit some points of it. Going to try and make this story really short. Back in January, my daughter was in a major car accident. Out of the car 30 feet, she came home from those injuries and was in a neck brace for muscle repair, is what I was told from the neurologist in the ER. Five weeks later, she goes back to the neurologist, and he tells me she has to have emergency surgery for her neck. It is fractured. It is broken. They took multiple scans. When she was in the ER, they took two right before we left, and they did not catch this. The doctor that we had at the, when she went in to get surgery, the doctor, the neurologist that we had there, said he saw it in the MRI at the ER. My point is, is that doctors are not always correct. Doctors sometimes can have misinformation, or it might not be their specialty in what they do. So I am very appreciative of doctors. I'm very thankful of doctors. I don't want that to be misunderstood, but I also want to say that there's lots of data out there. And we can't just look at the CDC and Indiana Gov. because there's other websites that say the opposite of what they're saying. So I'm asking you guys to look at all of the data and everything that's out there. I also want to put a little plug in for our teachers. I think that they need to have the right to choose as well. I think our students do, and I think our teachers do. I don't think there's anything wrong, like Katie said earlier, about if you choose to wear a mask, that's totally fine. If you choose to get a vaccination, that's totally fine. But I don't want that to be mandated on my kid or any of us. One more thing, my whole family has had COVID. My husband and I had it a little different. We had the fatigue. We had, you know, the loss of taste and smell. It was annoying. It was rough. It was rough to get through. We got through it. We did not have it. My other three kids had it. My husband and I did not get it when they got it. My younger two kids did not get it. And then we got it, and my other kids didn't get it, so it wasn't reoccurring.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brooke Vanderpool, and my husband and I live here in North Manchester, and we have two kids in Manchester Community Schools, one at MES and one at MIS. And I really want you to look into your quarantine procedures. It's not working. My little boy at MES, I got called on Thursday afternoon to come pick him up because him and 90-some of his friends had to be quarantined because they were around a paraprofessional, is what I was told. It may be different, but that's what was shared with me. I had a couple minutes to leave work, go pick him up. I go to pick him up, then he's told he can stay for lunch because the second graders are coming to lunch, and I should let him stay for lunch. Really? Because I was called from work to come pick him up. Then I find out my fifth grader is being quarantined as well. Not because he was near anybody, just because that's what we're going to do now. So we've got to figure out how we're doing this. So we're not leaving work and pulling our kids out of school. Our kids need to be in school. Whatever we need to do, we need to make sure our kids are in school. We need to figure out how to better do this quarantine process so that it's working better. So please look into that because it's not working. And being home is not working for my kids. I have one that's high ability. Okay, he can do it. But my second-year-old is struggling. We just signed a 504. He missed half a kindergarten. Last year, we begged to get him help, and we finally got him help, and now we've sent him home. We signed that Monday. We sent him home on Thursday, and now we're trying to do it from home again. This isn't working. This isn't helping our kids. And my husband is our county judge here, and he is seeing exactly what Jen Birch said. These kids, they don't have their parents. They don't have the best home life. They need to be in school and get that warm meal and have these amazing teachers and administrators. This isn't working, what we're doing. We need to fix this.
Thank you.
That is everybody I had on the list, so at this time, the floor will be open for those that had foregone their time initially. But you got your two minutes, so yeah, this is going to be for Nick Kopke, if he's interested in speaking, for Russell Rehard, if he's interested in speaking, and I believe Andrew Cook, if he is interested in speaking. Seeing none.
Oh, does anybody oppose if I speak for another minute or so? I mean, we still have more than 60 minutes.
I can't hear you with your mask on. Stop. Stop.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, Board, what do we want to do here? Do you want to allow extra time, an extra two minutes?
So we had 60 minutes, right?
Hold on.
Dave, I thought you said we'd go to 60 minutes.
Show of hands. Do you want to give people extra two minutes till we use up the 60 minutes? Show of hands, yes? Okay, go ahead. You get two more minutes.
Okay, so I just want to reiterate that I understand the social and the mental health part of this because I, as an ICU nurse for pediatric patients, I now, last week, saw a nine-year-old that tried to commit suicide. I am well aware beyond anybody in this room what it looks like for mental health for pediatric patients. So we all know, we all agree, the best thing is to keep them in school. It's where they're safe. It's where they're getting more meals. It's where they're getting the education they need. Last year worked. We all know last year worked. Now, we're dealing with a variant that is deadly to children. I don't care what anybody says up here because I've taken care of them. I've been in the room for 14 hours with an N95 on with a dying 11-year-old. So none of you in here can say you've done that, except for me. And so this is affecting children. This is killing children. And if it's 0.009%, that one kid could be in this community, just like that car accident that happened last year. Those kids, we might not have had a bed for them. One of them had a torn aorta. Guess what? If we had to fly him 45 minutes further, he could be dead. So it is our responsibility to take care of children. The AAP, which is the people that study this, are pleading for us to do the proper thing that they recommend. None of us here are educated enough in masks and in healthcare, anything like that, to make those choices. So we have to follow somebody's recommendation. I don't tell a teacher how to teach my kid because I have no idea. Thank God for Jason Dormant to teach my son calculus because I don't have a clue. But who are we to go against those recommendations, especially when they know we worked? We had all of our kids saved in school last year. It's a no-brainer to me.
Thank you.
Just a quick point of clarification. If you did not originally sign up on the list and list either your physical address or the buildings that your students go to school in, you'll need to state your name and either your physical address or where your students go to school. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Kimberly Puller. My son is Blake Puller. He is a senior at the high school. And no, I don't have COVID. I have allergies, just so you know. But I actually sent the board an email yesterday, and I hope that all of you had the opportunity to get it. I don't disagree that COVID is real. But what I do disagree with is that we are continually having our rights suppressed. We need to protect, as I said in my email, not only the staff, but our students. But that does not work with masks. I sent you documentation from an environmental engineering specialist that does forensics, does health safety, and he has documentation after documentation stating that it does not work. If we want to fix the problem, then what we need to do is work on the environment. The environment is our air system, our filtration system, and how we are going to eliminate the virus itself. The virus is not the small particles. The virus is aerosol. So my concern is, we're taking away freedoms and we're pressing down on our children. It is documented. Children do not do well in a mask. Young children, I have an eight-year-old. They don't do well in a mask because they need body language. They need facial expression to help them mentally, emotionally, and to help them grow. And we're missing it. And we're going to ruin our children because we're cutting their social ability just because we're living in fear. If we want to fix it, let's put the money where it needs to go and fix the ventilation systems. It's proven that it works. It's out there. There's data. And I've got tons of it, if you want it, and it's legitimate, and it's not, it's from legitimate people. I respect the doctors that are here. I know them. But they are not PPE specialists. Neither are the nurses. They are doctors to help with illness, and the nurses are there for care. But they're not specialists. She's right. She doesn't know, but there are people that do, and they could be brought in. It's a matter of whether we want to. And by the way, Ohio Special Needs School actually implemented the same program.
Hold up this second. My email address is on the website. Could you send me that documentation?
I will send you as much as you want. I actually have about 20 of them if you'd like it.
Yeah, I'm interested in the PPE and the air cleaning. I would like you to send that to me, please.
I'd be glad to do that. I actually did. If anybody didn't get it, I'd be happy to send it again to each one of you.
I'm sorry. I can't hear you. Okay, your time's up. Thank you.
I'm Pam Higgins. My children are all finished with school. Oh, 805 E Street. So this is from August. I just want to respond to some of what's been said. This is from August 24th of this year. Dr. Kristin Moffett, an infectious disease physician at Boston Children's Hospital, says, "Last year's school experience suggests that masks are effective for preventing transmission of the virus." Masking was one of several layers of measures that were used in school settings to prevent transmission from occurring in schools. And as one of those layered measures, along with ventilation and people staying home when they were sick and some additional hand hygiene, we found that transmission within the school setting was very, was really very minimal.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. I'd like to thank you all for coming and sharing your thoughts with us today. We've heard a variety of opinions and beliefs. Any action this board takes will not be popular with everyone. Whatever the outcome, please respect the board and each other because we are all in this together. There's no silver bullets. So with that, public comment is... Pardon? Somebody say something? I'm sorry. With that public comment portion of the meeting is over. We will move for the recommendation of presentation. I'm sorry, not recommendation. There's a recommendation from the administration to modify the 3.0. Mr. Darnell.
Thank you, Dave. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. First of all, I want to say thank you, Board, and thank you, community of Manchester Community Schools, for voicing your opinions on what is best. We all have our own opinions. And administratively, we have an opinion expressed through the updates to the plan. Our administrative team, I want to recognize those folks. Dr. Libby, who's with you tonight, Mr. Thomas, Mrs. Corus, Mrs. Janaby, Mr. Self, and then our corporation RN, Mrs. M.A. Hider. We all met on Friday to discuss the current status of quarantines, the current status of cases. We had consultation on the phone with Dr. Rowe from the Waldemans Health Department, at least three times during the course of our meeting. And Board, we have the recommendation before you. Here are the updates that we're proposing to you tonight for the real plan. First of all, face coverings. Face coverings will be required for all staff. Staff to maintain, exceed a social distance, they remove their face coverings. Students, currently encouraged to wear face coverings to protect those and others in the K-12 indoor classroom setting. The close contact definition excludes students who are within three to six feet of an infected student, and both infected student and exposed student, correctly insisting on wearing well-fitting masks the entire time. This is latest information from the Indiana Department of Health Guidance that was issued on August 6th. Under scriptal precedence, we're adding lunch seating will be socially distanced, as it was last year, with predetermined seating and assignments for close contact. Or crazies, excuse me. Always will be one direction where permissible and available for students. That's kind of the services will be disinfected routinely throughout the day. So we're really moving back to those protocols that we had in place last year. Intervention, our health air filters on all HVAC units will be changed routinely. Just so that a point of information on that one. We're looking at changing those air filters monthly. And because some of the comments that were made about quality of air in the buildings, that is key, and that's why we've added that statement under prevention. Under outside educational groups, the recommendation is that outside educational groups will be determined by case basis, by principals of the building administration, and they will require to wear a mask while in the building. So if we have folks that come in outside groups, they would be wearing masks while in the building. Our filters will continue and we'll adhere to the mitigation procedures for Manchester communities, as well as any additional requirement at the venue attended for that filter. So if class or grade goes to, you know, requires masks, then students would be expected to wear masks during that period. We'll look at the current status of COVID activity and the location where students would be attending as well. If it's a hot spot, students would not be going on that filter. So Board, that is the administrative recommendation, so that be approved. So Board, that is the administrative recommendation. So would that be approved?
Mr. Darnell, I appreciate the work that your team has done in putting this recommendation together. From some of the discussions that I've had with the board, I feel like there's, there seems to be a consensus that we'd like a little more detail in this plan and maybe to make it a little more comprehensive. I realize you did not have a lot of time to come up with these, these changes. So I do appreciate the time you did put in on it. I'd like to move that we form an advisory panel to draft additional changes to the reentry plan. That panel would consist of two local healthcare professionals, two school board members, and three representatives from the school. That could be, you know, some combination of the superintendent, building principals, school nurse, MTA representative, whatever, whatever you guys come up with would be fine. The panel will work to complete this task as quickly as possible, but ideally no later than September 14th. And I do want to emphasize this would be an advisory panel. Any proposed changes to the plan will still need to be approved by the school board.
Is that a motion?
That was.
And I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Questions, clarification?
Raju, so I understand what you're, what you're asking. You're asking advisory panel, two local health representatives. Those could be physicians, nurses, people in the healthcare facility. What's your thinking?
Yeah, that would be local physicians or nurses, I suppose. Whoever, whoever's available immediately.
Okay. And two more members, that's two of you all, and then the three school reps. I guess I would defer that, I would want to make sure that M.A. Hire was one of those school reps as our, as one of our representatives. Then I would look towards our principals for the upper two slots to be filled.
And that, that's, that's not something that you have to decide right now. I mean, I guess that, that team would need to be figured out relatively quickly because we'd like to move, move fast here, but you don't have to decide that at this meeting.
Could I get you to modify your motion so we don't get this all tangled up to... I would like to see you and Mr. Hensley appoint your seven-member committee out of the people that were talked about and try and get us some steps and some levels going forward on what the PPE is, what the protection is, what the, what the actions are. Would you two be willing to serve as the two board members, as the, as the vice president and the secretary?
Sure.
And then you can pick your seven, you guys can get together and pick your seven members with Mr. Darnell or Kyle Whelan, depending on whenever the meeting is and when he gets...
Well, I mean, we can't really appoint, right? We can ask people.
Well, that's what I meant. Yeah. You okay with that, Mr. Darnell?
Yeah, that's fine. I, yeah, I just wanted some clarity here.
Well, I think that's the point of this, is there's a lot of moving parts to this. You know, there's a lot of interactions. There's, there's, you know, number one in our goal... Number one in our goal is student safety, and it's always going to be that way. But there is a balance. There's educate, you know, instructional integrity that we have to worry about. I mean, just listen to people talking on a mask, you know, you, I mean, you can fill that, right? And I wear a mask. I, I do instructional too, so there is validity to that. You've got, you know, you've got, and there is, the right of the people. And, and, you know, regardless of what anybody's going to say, I do worry about student count. You know, if I'm on this board and I don't worry about student count, I'm a fool. So there's a lot of moving pieces to this thing, and I think there's other solutions. I know everybody's triggered on masks, you know, and I wish I, I knew the answer to that where, where the, whether, you know, I do believe they're somewhat effective, but, you know, highly effective. So there's a lot of questions, you know, that I still have in my mind on this, and especially in the area of quarantine, you know, how we're going about that. All of a sudden, this blows up. I think the smartest thing for the board to do, and we don't want kids out of school. But you know what? When something flares this, like this, it's like a defect, you know, in, in industry or whatever, the first thing you have to do is contain. You have to kind of get a handle on things and see what's really going on here. So that's, you know, that's kind of the purpose of this committee, and it's not that, you know, I just see it evolving and going on to guide us through this and tell if there is an end, you know? We don't know that either. I personally, I've had both shots personally. I don't know what that means anymore, to be honest with you. You know, I do, you know, I am required to wear masks in corporations that I work with. If I don't wear that mask, I don't work at that corporation, you know? So my livelihood depends on that. But I'll tell you this. The first time a student dies, I know darn well who you guys are going to be looking at. And it's not going to be the restaurants or the gas stations or the supermarket or every place else where people aren't wearing masks. It's going to be right here at this school board in this school, you know? And so when you think, you know, when you're out there talking to each other and you're in the public and you're having these discussions, you know, be fair about this. You know, it, it was effective last year. That's the truth about it. But this is a different virus, right? And then, and so, you know, I, I think that's the, you know, the one thing I had a problem with Friday is I didn't have any input into this plan, and that's why we called this meeting, get input from the public. And there's a lot of moving parts. And so what we're asking, you know, our, our deal is to put a committee with a cross-functional committee from our community, not Boston, not anywhere else, not even Indianapolis, to know what's going on in this community and make informed decisions about this. So that's, you know, my two cents on it.
Any other comments on the committee motion? Okay, call for a vote. We're going to appoint a, Mr. Hensley, Mr. Shaw and Mr. Hensley are going to put a committee together, a cross-section of the community, and study the different levels of PPE and all the other moving parts. All in favor, signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. With that, I guess I would make a motion that we table the administrator's plan and leave it as is until this committee can get back to us, hopefully by the 14th. And we will schedule a meeting on the 16th because we already have a full agenda for the 14th and business to conduct. Do I have a second on that motion? I'm saying leave, leave the process as it is right now. Table the administrators... Let me say that again. Table the administrators amendments until such time as the committee can come back.
I, I really don't see a, you know, the point of contention here is masks. So I, you know, if that's the point of contention with the staff wearing a mask, I'd look at that, but it's hard. I mean, I want the plan and the other steps done now. So I mean, that's how I'm looking at it here.
Dave, I'm willing to make a motion to, for the admin proposal with the amendment that masks be required for everyone in the building beginning tomorrow.
Yeah, could you say that again, please?
Yeah, it's a simple amendment to, or change to the admin proposal that I think the, the risk to our students is high, extremely high right now. So I would like to make, to make a motion to approve this proposal and change face coverings will be required for staff and students.
I have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Rick, just clarification on that motion. Is that until the, until the panel comes back in two weeks and...
Just keep going, Board.
Yes, keep going.
So...
Robert, this, I would propose that until the committee has a chance to come back with a recommendation. I don't think we have time to wait.
Do I have a second for Mr. Espisette's motion?
I'll second.
All in favor of Mr. Espisette's motion, signify by raising your hand.
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion.
I know it's a heated and contentious issue, and when I read, I read every email to the best of my ability that we received in the last two or three days. And I appreciate everybody's input into this. When I read those emails, I hear fear. I think we're scared. We're either, we could be scared of the virus, we could be scared of virtual learning, we could be fearful of losing your freedoms all over the place, and I understand it. My fear, the highest two points of my fear are student illness and not in-person learning. Those are the two things that I think will impact our students and our community at the highest level. And there's no perfect answer. There's no risk-free solution. But I think our best path forward to keep kids healthy and to keep them in person is to do a mask requirement. Respectfully ask that that be considered until the committee comes back with a recommendation that could address other issues.
Further discussion? I guess I'd like you to amend your motion then and specify what kind of masks because the CDC says NIOSH approved, or they say N95. And there's been testing done with surgical masks and cloth masks. But in talking to the administrators, talking to the teachers, we got, we got a cornucopia of masks. We got everything from Dakron to a burlap sack to nylon. And the testing, according to the data that I read, was done with surgical masks and cloth masks. So if we're going to consider this, I think we need to consider mandating what kind of mask. And we're looking at mandating this for two weeks when it may not end up being a mandate. You know, the, my concern is the oxygen levels and the CO2 levels. You know, I spent 42 years carrying around a respirator and an air monitor, and I know a little bit about wearing one of those things. And there's a big difference between wearing a Dakron mask that says Superman on it and wearing one of these disposable dust masks that you can buy at the hardware. You know, you, you got something that, you know, you're talking about putting four and five-year-olds in masks when they got lungs this big, you know? I just, I just think you need to modify your motion and specify what kind of mask.
So Dave, I think that's, that's something that is definitely worth talking about in the committee. I just don't think we've got the resources to, to answer that question sitting here tonight.
No, we're not going there.
No, we're not going there. You had your opportunity.
You know, it's a pretty serious situation, you know? There is health risk to the students, and it's not about you guys. It's about them, you know? And don't, don't applaud for me because it, I'll tell you what, this, this is just a good sign of what's wrong with our nation, that nobody knows how to go with problem solving. We all only want to have our own position. We want my way. You know, your way doesn't count. That's kind of how we go about these things, and that's why we want to put, let's use a process here. Well, that's why we're here. That's why we didn't just do this, right? That's why we're getting your opinion.
Right now, we're done talking, and you're going to form a committee with only medical people, none of that.
No.
No, that's not what we said. Well, we got a motion on the table.
Hold on, I'm not done yet.
Okay.
You do have a valid point. This mask thing is turned in... This mask thing is current, you know, you do have a point on the type of mask because it's basically turned into an accessory, is what I see with masks. You know, if we're, if, if it ever comes to mandating masks, we do need to specify what type of masks to wear. One thing that confuses me about masks is, if I'm wearing my mask, why am I so concerned about another person wearing their mask? If that mask protects me, why am I so concerned about that? Well, I'm not...
We had, we had public comment. I'm not going to have this meeting turn into a circus. We gave you your time, okay? And Mr. Hensley, please keep your comments to the board. We, we got to keep, we got... Okay, well, that's fine, but we have a decorum that we're going to try and follow here. And what we're talking about is a motion and a second on the table that Mr. Espisette said. And, you know, I'm asking him to clarify his motion to specify the type of mask. Quite frankly, I think it needs to be done because I don't want to, you know, I got five granddaughters that live here and go to school here, and I got a daughter that teaches here. And if we're going to put masks on them, it's going to be the kind of masks that the CDC has done the testing on so that we're not putting our kids' health as the cure, you know, the CDC says if the masks are wet and dirty, they're supposed to be discarded. I heard a teacher tonight say, you know, there's masks that the kids drop on the floor and put back on that they wouldn't touch. So again, I ask you, are you going to modify your motion to require a certain type of mask? Or would you withdraw your motion and just adopt the plan as written?
I'll stand by my motion, and I'm not an expert in masks, but I would be comfortable having the same requirement for masks as we had last year.
Again, we have more data than we had two years ago.
Dave, I answered your question.
Okay, so we got a motion on the table and a second. Any other further discussion?
To echo Mike's comment, this is not about anybody else except those kids and those staff in the buildings that we are charged to have security, have protection, health, everything. I urge you guys to see that. I totally understand the comments of everybody this evening. I also read every single email, and I totally appreciate that very much. However, at the end of the day, we were elected to take care of these folks' children that they entrust to our building every single day. When you let your children go to go into school, you expect them to come out healthy and protected and well. And yes, I agree with a couple of the folks. We need to look at the quarantine rules very much because that's, that goes right along with it. But at the end of the day, that's, that's what we're here for, to make sure everybody gets home healthy and safe.
Any other comments? Okay, so the motion on the table is to approve the reopening plan with the addition of masks being required. No definition on mask, just a mask for staff and students. Is that correct?
Until the two weeks, until the panel comes back in two weeks with a, or sooner, with a recommendation. That's, is that my right?
Yes.
Any other comments? Roll call vote. Mr. Raymer? Yes. Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hensley?
No.
No.
I vote no. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Espisette?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
No.
Okay, motion passes 4-3, so I guess we're going to be wearing masks for two weeks.
And we're going to be sanitizing, and we're going to be putting people...
It's in, Mr. Booker, it's in the policy.
Yes. So it's not just about that.
Mr. Darnell, any further comments?
Once you approve tonight, move forward with that, we'll put that, those changes in place. Principal, we're all at the meeting, so they've heard this. We'll communicate this information out via parent square, we'll put the updated plan on the website and move forward. So I would like to, I guess, have a conversation with Mike and Rod do about this committee as far as getting this group going. I guess I would encourage any physicians, nurses that are there to, if they have interest in serving on that committee, to talk with Mike and Raju about that as well. So, thank you.
School board comments? I'd like to thank everybody for coming and entertain, entertain a motion for adjournment.
I got a comment.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That, that's the hardest decision I've ever made. I, I did it because there was compelling evidence to change my heart. That's all.
Any other board comments? I entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Mr. Brubaker?
Second.
Mr. Booker? All in favor? We're adjourned.